Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you very much for being here. My name is Bill Eames, and on behalf of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, we'd like to invite you to today's forum. And this forum involves eight candidates, and two of them are not here at this moment, but there are eight candidates vying for the position of Director with Tri-City Medical Center. And the first thing I want to say is thank you very much for running to fill that position. We know it's an important position, and it takes an awful lot of your personal time and life to go ahead and to volunteer for a position like this. And of course, these voters are here to find out which of you are the best ones to represent their interests. Now, the Chamber of Commerce has a committee which is known as the Backpack Committee, which stands for Business and Community Political Action Committee. And we're all interested in the best quality of life that we can have in the community of Oceanside and surrounding cities, Vista, Carlsbad, and so forth. So we found out a long time ago, everyone takes their voting seriously. But it can only be serious to a point when the only thing you know about a candidate is what they look like and maybe the 200-word statement which they prepared. So what we've done is given them an opportunity to expand on that by asking them questions of which they are previously unfamiliar. So all of these questions, we have not shared them with any of the candidates, so what is a surprise to one will also be a surprise to the other seven as well. And we'll be asking them questions very shortly. But I would like to introduce somebody to you right now because we are very happy with this room. We just had the mayoral candidate session earlier today. There wasn't a vacant seat in the room. It's such a great room to handle a forum such as this, and this is one of the many rooms in Miracoastal College that is designed for the use by the citizenry to the communities which are served. And we'd like to give you a little history lesson, and so to do that, I'd like to invite the Chair of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce to tell us about that, Jerry Salier.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for turning out today, and thanks for turning out last week. This is a great opportunity, and we want to thank Miracoastal College for sharing this great facility for us. And I wanted to talk about someone who was the Chairman of the Chamber of Commerce in 1975, and he's on the wall back here. His name is John McDonald, and I'm happy to say he was a friend of mine. He was a very fair-minded fellow. I joked that he was so kind, I didn't know he was a Republican until the funeral. This is a nonpartisan race. And I thank everyone for turning out. John, the trivia question for the first half, who was the county supervisor before Bill Horn? And it was John McDonald. And Dr. John was a graduate of Oceanside Carlsbad Community College in 1941. He served on our city council in Oceanside for a term, and then he went on to serve the county supervisors from District 6 for two terms, and then that's about the time he and I became friends. And a few years ago, we wanted to do a roast of Dr. John to raise money for K-O-C-T, and it was really very tough because he was honorable. All of his friends were nurses and doctors, or nurses and police officers and teachers. We couldn't find any big-money dirty guys, so we did the publisher of the paper the next year. Anyway, we hope you enjoy yourselves today. We hope you think of Dr. John, and if you didn't know him, you missed out on a really great guy that I just think the world of, and I'm glad that he was our Chairman of the Chamber of Commerce in 1975. Thank you very much, and have a great time. Thank you. Also, just a quick accolade for my friend Bill Eames, who does a great job. No one gives him any credit, and he gets complaints because we write these questions that he gets blamed for. And I want to thank Bill and acknowledge him. He's done a great job. He's been with us three years now we've been doing this, or three cycles, three silly seasons. So we're having a great time. Thank you very much.
I'd like you to know the way we operate at the Chamber. We create the questions, and we try to make them completely fair, and we make sure that the candidates are not familiar with the questions prior to the event. So it gives us a chance to know more than what we would read in their pre-publicized information. And so we do things by time. We have official timers, and the timers today include Don Reedy, who is the Chair-elect for the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. Can we acknowledge him right now with some applause, please? And then we have Debbie Allen, who is the past Chair of the Chamber of Commerce, and thank you very much, Debbie. We have two timers to make sure that we are accurate with this, and we have two types of questions we will be asking. They are all open-ended questions, so the candidates can respond from their hearts and their experience. And one question is 90 seconds long, and the other question is 60 seconds long. And what we do is, when you have 30 seconds remaining of the 60 or 90 seconds, we will hold up a green card, like is illustrated by our timer extraordinary, and then when you have 15 seconds remaining, he will turn over to the red side, and it's stationary. And then when you're done, he kind of shakes it a little bit. And then if you're still talking, we have Fernando, who will come on over with the hook and get you off there. So that's the way we do that. And some questions will be individual questions to the individuals who are representing themselves. And then there's another type of question for which all of the candidates will respond to the same question. So I'll keep helping you along, and good luck, and thank you very much once again for volunteering to do this. Okay, the first question is a 90-second question, and I'm going to start with Ramona Fannila. Ramona, in your ballot statement, you outline many years of community service and achievements. In your vast experience, what is the most difficult issue you've had to face, and how was it resolved? Ramona?
Every issue is a very difficult one because it involves a lot of careful study, and it involves a lot of gathering of community support for that particular decision. There is no easy fix to most of today's problems. Today's problems, no matter if it's a capital project or an issue, require a lot of study and a lot of bringing people together to look at these problems or opportunities. As an example, the LEGO, whether, the question was at one point whether we should have LEGO Land in Carlsbad. That was a huge issue. It divided the community, but it brought support from the surrounding communities, and it actually ended up as a ballot measure which passed 57% to 43%. That was one that took in the entire region. It wasn't just a Carlsbad issue. We had support from Oceanside. We had support from other cities. We had the county support and the state support. So every issue you do, whether it's building a desalinization plant, or building a LEGO, or finding, funding a capital campaign, it has a lot of problems to it.
Great. Thank you very much. The next question is for Wayne Lingenfelter. Wayne, in your ballot statement, you say you are eager to provide the highest quality of patient care to our Tri-City community. How do you, as a board member, accomplish this? Wayne?
The Board has a responsibility to, and a mandate, actually, to be able to control all that happens administratively and operationally at the hospital. The way that I would ensure that that was done is to make sure, first of all, that we have good employees, good doctors, good nurses, good support for the nurses. All these things make up the culture of the hospital. And in order to have a good culture of the hospital, it starts from the top, and I believe the top is the Board. The administration certainly has more control over the people than the Board does, but the Board needs to set the policies that make sure that you can go out and hire decent and good people to work in the hospital, people who care about the quality of care in the hospital. And I would also be very active in understanding what the quality of care was in the hospital. There are a lot of measurements that you can take. The hospital is accredited by the Joint Commission, and the Joint Commission comes in every three years and checks out all the quality of the hospital and makes sure that things are being done appropriately and correctly in accordance with their standards. And so I would make sure that the hospital was always preparing, every day is a survey day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next question is for Roger Reese. What particular skills in your business experience will enable you to bring the common sense and integrity you outlined in your ballot statement to the Tri-City Healthcare District Board of Trustees?
Well, that's a great question. I'll do my best to answer it, and I'm going to answer it from my heart, as you had mentioned earlier. My name is Roger Reese, and I'm a small business owner, and it's a janitorial business, and we're used to cleaning up a lot of things, and I can head in there and do that. But realistically, my background is community service. My background, my upbringing, is involving myself into the community, rooting myself in my community, listening to the needs, which, as a member, an appointed member of the Healthcare Alliance Committee, one of my duties is to reach out to the community on services and programs and facilities that's going to improve health care. I listen to what people say, and I bring that, I bring that to the Community Healthcare Alliance, and from there, it goes to the Board and then out into the community. I'm a very hard-working, conscientious individual, and I put my heart into everything, including, if I am going to be elected, I will dedicate as many hours per month as need be to perform to the best of my ability for each and every one of you. I pledge integrity, I pledge peace, and I pledge civility.
Thank you very much. Rosemarie Reno, you have the privilege of answering the next question. You have served as Chair of the Tri-City Healthcare District Board of Trustees for several terms. What has been the biggest obstacle to achieving our harmonious governing environment? Rosemarie?
Thank you. I'm glad you said harmonious. It's a difficult time sometimes when you have to think of civility, and you have the public eye on K-O-C-T, watching the Board meeting, and you have someone that scorns the Board, scorns the administration, and states scurrilous statements about the administration and name-calling, et cetera. And this is constant, going, constantly going on in the back room, and she can be heard on TV sometimes. That's a Board member. The other issue is getting things turned around at Tri-City. We've had a great, big change at Tri-City, and a necessary change. 209, 210, and 211 have been very, very productive years with the new CEO. I was responsible for bringing that CEO in, and I'm proud of him. He's a visionary. I worked together with him. I believe there needs to be collaborative working with the CEO from the Board. We cannot have this constant bickering back and forth to get the hospital turned around, and I think the community knows, we have turned this hospital around. We've done a great big job. I see a gentleman shaking his head. I'm sorry you disagree with this. We've done a tremendous job.
Okay, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Julie, we're going to give you the privilege of answering the next question. In your ballot statement, you reference your two terms on the Tri-City Finance Operations and Planning Committee. What was your most critical decision or recommendation you made during your term, and why was it important?
Well, I think one of the things that I actually was unsuccessful in sending my vision up to the Board about was this notion of the bond exchanging that was done. I was sitting on the city council at the time they were talking about doing that, and I took it to our financial guy at City Hall, and he said to me, this is a problem, you know, the Board should be aware of it. And I tried to get that message to the Board, but I was unsuccessful. Now, truthfully, that was under another administration, so I think things have changed quite a bit on that committee, but that caused a lot of trouble for the hospital down the road.
Okay, thank you. Charlene Anderson, you are seeking a second term on the Tri-City Board of Trustees. What was the major accomplishment of your first term, and why?
Major accomplishment of my first term would be putting every patient first and being sure that there were adequate resources to take care of those patients, making sure that we had, actually, when I first came in, our ACTs, which are like CNAs that help the nurses, we were a little short, and that was one of the things that I noticed. I saw how the other hospitals were staffing, and I went and I talked to administration and got that changed, and brought up to where the staffing ratios are, what the state mandates that they be. And staffing has been probably my primary, on my radar, my personal radar, because of my experience of having been in those halls and in the trenches, as we like to say, and knowing what it takes, how many people, and, you know, what the acuity of patients are, and how things can change in an instant. So I've kept a good eye on that, and in collaboration with our Chief Nurse Executive and our CEO, done a good job with that.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next question, we're going to ask the same question of each of you. This question will be 60 seconds maximum, and Charlene, we're going to start with you on this question. What can you bring to the Tri-City Healthcare District Board of Trustees that the other candidates cannot?
Well, first of all, I was a single parent, raised two kids by myself in a very challenging world, and I'll tell you, being a nurse sort of makes you a jack-of-all-trades. You end up being a detective sometimes. Sometimes you're, you know, you're focusing on nutrition. Other times, you're a social worker dealing with families. But being a single mom challenges everything you do. And I raised two very successful children, and I'm really proud of that. And I was actually glad when they turned 18. I think that was even, I think I was happier when they turned 18 than when I put them on the school bus for first grade. But seriously, you know, am I done?
Almost.
Okay. The intuition that it gives you and takes is really important.
Thank you very much. Julie, I'm going to ask you next. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Thank you. What can you bring to the Tri-City Healthcare District Board of Trustees that the other candidates cannot?
Well, I think what I bring to it is many, many years of serving as an elected official. I do know how government is supposed to run. I knew how people are supposed to behave on boards, and I think I listen more than I talk often, so I'm not the best at talking, but I think I do know how to help people solve problems. I do know how to read budgets, and I think that I could be very helpful at soothing the atmosphere that has persisted at Tri-City Hospital Board.
Thank you very much. Rosemarie, it's your turn. Would you like the question read again?
Please, thank you.
Thank you. What can you bring to the Tri-City Healthcare District Board of Trustees that the other candidates cannot?
I have a tremendous amount of health care experience. As a public health nurse, as a, actually, John McDonald was my boss at one time. I taught nursing here at Miracoastal College for many years under John, Dr. John. I've taught allied health sciences. Far from that, I'm certificated in hospital administration. I'm certificated in hospital finances. I've gone on to school to get these different certificates to assist me to make proper decisions, prioritizing in strategic planning, prioritizing in budgeting, and I do have that acumen. I think that I need to continue my service with Tri-City to ensure its growth and expansion of services for the people.
Thank you very much. Roger, what can you bring to the Tri-City Healthcare District Board of Trustees that the other candidates cannot?
I'm going to give you three things. The first one is my own personal sense of the community. I'd like everybody to know that the largest community to be represented in the healthcare district is Oceanside, and I want, I'm rooted in my community, and I'd like to be able to represent you well. So you want to know who your representatives are. I have business acumen. I'd like to bring my business acumen to the Tri-City Medical Center's Board of Directors. I started a business from zero, out of, from zero, and now I'm happy to say that we're not just a business people, we're job creators. There are men and women that work for our company, and I'm looking, even though we're heading into the end of the year, to bring more people on, which not many businesses will do that as they head towards Christmas. But my wife said we need to do that, and certainly the knowledge, I have certain and specific knowledge of how this Board operates, because I am, and I said this before, I'm an appointed member to a Board-level committee, and I understand the certain and specific mechanics, and you need to know, I know that.
Thank you very much. Could you please move your microphone, Roger, a little closer to you?
Yes.
I mean, it'll slide over, actually, towards you about three, four inches. That'll help. Thank you. Okay, Wayne, I'm going to ask you the same question. What can you bring to the Tri-City Healthcare District Board of Trustees that the other candidates cannot?
In a word, experience, current, relevant health care experience. I've spent the last 31 years as a health care executive, and I've been the CEO of six different hospitals in California. I'm currently a member of the California Hospital Association Executive Committee and Board of Trustees. I'm also the President of the United Hospital Association, which is an association that represents for-profit hospitals in the state of California. I understand and know how to run a hospital. I understand and know the politic of the Board and how to work on a Board. I've been the Chairman of several of the Boards of hospitals, that I was the CEO of the hospital, and I believe that my education, I have a doctorate degree in institutional management from Pepperdine University, and I believe these are all unique to the other members of the committee here.
Thank you very much. And Ramona, you get a chance to answer this question as well. What can you bring to the Tri-City Healthcare District Board of Trustees that the other candidates cannot?
What I bring is my experience as a leader in various delivery systems, in, for example, the airport delivery system. I was Vice Chair of the San Diego Regional Airport Authority. I was Chair of Sandag, which leads our 18 cities and the county together towards solving problems. I was on this Carlsbad City Council. I was on often very many ground transportation systems. But health care is a delivery system, just like the airline industry, and just like ground transportation, and just like the city. You have a product, you deliver it, you try to do the best you can for the people who are involved, and you work within the budget you have.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next section, we have a 60-second question again, but they're all individually customized for you. Ramona?
Yes.
This question is for you. What do you mean when in your ballot statement you say, "Board members create the quality and stature of the agency they represent"?
What I mean is that you create the climate from which good things can happen. If you are a cooperative and well-studied Board member, and you have the other Board members' interests at heart, and you want to work together as a team, then you can create a climate to effect change. And we all want a better perception of our Tri-City Hospital. We know we have a good hospital here, but the perception doesn't always follow that. So by having a Board majority on the same page and with the same commitments toward making the hospital a greater place than it is, then a lot can be accomplished.
Thank you very much. Wayne, I'd like to ask you, in your ballot statement, you outline an extensive administrative background. Tell us about your governing experience.
Every hospital that I've worked in over these 31 years has had a governing Board, and the governing Board has the responsibility, as I've said earlier, to make sure that the administration and the operation of the hospital is going the way that they set the direction for. The Board is responsible to set the direction for the hospital and where it's going to go, and give that guidance to the administration, and let them take the ball and do what they need to do to get there. My experience on Board, as I said, I've been a Chairman of several of the Boards of hospitals that I've been the CEO of, and I know and understand how to bring, as Ramona said, the Board together in common cause rather than divisively and get things going that you don't want to get going.
Thank you very much. Roger, I have a question for you. In your ballot statement, you talk about the public being open to many possibilities of implementing changes with regard to health care. What possibilities do you believe the public is open to implementing?
Well, that's actually a very deep question. I won't be able to cover it in seconds, but I'm going to say this, and I'm going to be very transparent with everybody here. My personal belief is that we who want health care and want good health care should not be looking to Washington to receive it. Washington should be looking locally to see how institutions are developing programs to meet the needs of their growing community. And when I say growing, it's growing in age, it's growing in size, it's growing in many things. I believe that the public is looking towards, looking to their public health service providers to meet those needs, and I think it's, in the bigger picture, I think that Washington should be looking to us to see how to do the job the correct way.
Thank you very much. Rosemarie, how will you subsidize the safe patient care at the lowest cost possible that you support in your ballot statement?
I believe that in order to give the lowest possible cost of care and maintain quality care and safe care at the same time, that we need to look beyond just the hospital walls. We need to do joint venturing with the clinics in North County here, and we are doing that. We're venturing with Vista Community Clinic. We support them monetarily, and we are supporting North County Health Services. Without them, I don't know how we can give quality care to patients that need care, and there are going to be more of them coming down the pike. And I think it's important that we help these people get quality care.
Thank you very much. Julie, in your ballot statement, you comment that this is a critical transitional period of health care changes. What do you see as the major challenge or challenges facing us?
I think that the major challenge that's facing us right now locally is that we have an exceptionally fine hospital that people don't realize how good it is. And for me, I think it's really important that people begin to believe in our hospital and believe in the people who are running the hospital so that they feel confident about coming to our hospital, and they choose our hospital over others. There is a lot of misperception about Tri-City Hospital, and it needs to be changed.
Thank you very much. Charlene, in your ballot statement, you talk about how your health care experience shaping your vision for the Tri-City Hospital District. What is your vision?
My vision for Tri-City is that we will be in 10% in the nation for good patient care by 2015. That's on our strategic plan, and I absolutely agree that that's doable. Since I came to the Board four years ago, our hospital has achieved many awards, including top awards by JCO for our stroke program, our cardiac care program, I believe we have gold there. I can't name them all off right now, but I know that there are about nine awards that we have in major system areas. Our interventional cardiac program is incredible, and now we have the, we have the robot, the DaVinci robot, where they're actually doing these cardiac bypass surgeries where they have beating heart surgery, where they don't have to take- they don't have to take the...
Go ahead, finish your sentence.
They don't have to take the, they don't have to stop the heart to do the surgery, and the patients have a much greater and easier recovery time.
Thank you very much. Steve, I'm going to ask you a question, and thank you for being here. This question is particular to you and no one else, and please answer it in 60 seconds.
Okay.
When the green card goes up, that means you have 30 seconds. When the red card goes up, you have 15, and if you start to moving it all around, it's time to stop, okay?
Cut it off.
So, Steve, in your ballot statement, you say that we must improve services while controlling costs for our citizens. How will you do this?
I think, first of all, I want to thank the team for letting me walk in a little late. I had a prior appointment. Basically, what I would do, and am I on here?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's fine.
Basically, I would do is would, I would look at the different programs they have available in, in the hospital right now, and try to find ways to cut costs within those programs, because I know there's several different types of programs they have that deal with services to the community. We heard about services to the cleaning, community clinic, and trying to work with them, trying to find ways to utilize them to come into the, the hospital and use their services along, in conjunction with the hospital. I think there's ways that we can continue to recruit good doctors, doctors groups, bringing those into the hospital, allowing them to use the hospital as their, their service area, and, and increase the revenue into the hospital.
Great. Thank you very much. And this next question is also a 60-second question. We are going to ask the same question of each of the candidates, and Steve, we're going to start with you. And so our question is, tell us how you would go about achieving consensus among diverse opinions.
You know, first of all, I have to reflect on my time on, like, my council in Vista, and, and I think one of the things that I brought to that council was exactly that. I know one of my goals in, in being elected was to try to bring some, now I wouldn't say sanity to that board, because there was some contention on the board prior to me getting there. And I think I've worked well with my peers. I'm certainly going to bring that same expertise to this board, a level-headedness. I'm, I'm not, if you look at my record, I'm not abusive, I'm not confrontational, and so there appears to be some members of this board that are, and so it will be my challenge to, to make sure that I listen to them, to take in, in what they have to say, and to express my views, views fully too. But I, I think probably my record speaks for itself, and, and one of the reasons that I am sitting at this status right now is because of that record.
Thank you very much.
And he's flashing that now.
Okay, Julie, I'm going to ask you the same question. Tell us how you go about achieving consensus among diverse opinions.
Well, I think the first thing is to realize that democracy demands a variety of opinions, and when you're trying to figure out a solution for a problem, you have to listen to all the opinions and listen respectfully, and, and then try to come to consensus and figure out what's the best thing for your, for your board or commission. I, I think it's really important for board members to respect each other and, and to be thoughtful about the decisions they make, and I think that my reputation precedes me on, on being a respectful person.
Thank you very much. Rosemarie, tell us how you go about achieving consensus among diverse opinions.
I had the opportunity to use this experience. At a closed session just recently, last Tuesday evening, we had a very difficult situation to handle. I cannot get into the situation, however, as chair, I allowed everyone to address the issue. And after we addressed the issue, then we took a consensus of what we should do, hearing what we had heard. It's the way we communicate, the way we trust, the way we respect, the integrity of the individual. And I believe that, in all honesty, we need to first listen, and then let everyone address the issue, and then take a consensus, as I did Tuesday, and we came to a good conclusion.
Thank you. Roger, tell us how you would go about achieving consensus among diverse opinions.
Well, the board of directors needs to provide sufficient care in their decision-making process, and it includes acting in good faith and to act in a manner that is in the best interest of both the hospital and the public. I actually wrote that down because I was thinking about that. I deal with it a lot. I am a business owner. We have many businesses that we, that, that we meet the cleaning needs of throughout the community, and every business and every building is unique unto itself, and to hire people and to train them, and to work out those relationships really requires me to be many things, and in many places, and act sufficiently, and act with courtesy and care in both retraining an employee if need be, and just speaking and listening to the needs that may not be being met by, by the client. And that's just going to have to carry over.
Thank you very much. Wayne, I'd like to ask you the same question. Tell us how you would go about achieving consensus among diverse opinions.
Well, as a hospital CEO, I've had to do that many, many times. There are opinions about how things should be done, and when they should be done, and who should do them. I think that the main way to do it is motivation. Motivation has to do with, everybody who has an opinion is motivated by something to have that opinion, and I think it is incredibly important to find out what that motivation is. And when you find out what the motivation is, you can move the motivation into something that is more productive if the motivation is not productive. If it is productive, then you may be able to move other people's opinion toward that motivated, good motivation opinion that someone has. I think it's important, as been said, to listen. You have to listen to all the dissenting opinions. You have to get the dissenting opinions and then be able to come to a conclusion.
Thank you very much. Ramona, please tell us how you would go about achieving consensus among diverse opinions.
Usually, when you have a situation of diverse opinions, you find, when you start looking into it, that the facts, the pertinent facts for making the decision usually aren't there or aren't understood. So you have to get what the facts are. Then often, you have a policy that is unclear to those who are in the decision-making process. You have a policy that's not clearly understood, or a procedure that's not clearly understood. As chair of Sandag of the 18 cities in the county, we often had these decisions where everything was murky and, and unclear, and, and it was difficult to find a path to solve it, but we did, by putting all the pertinent facts on the table, deciding what the policy is going to be that we're going to work under, and having a very clear, open, fair procedure by every, which everybody can participate.
Thank you very much. Charlene, it's your turn. Please tell us how you would go about achieving consensus among diverse opinions.
I like to meet people exactly where they are as a starting point, whether it's on the board, or with my patients, or anybody really that I might not agree with, and you can always find some common ground. Once you have that common ground, you've got some sort of rapport. Then, by just being civil and treating that person as you would like to be treated yourself, you can deal with almost anything. And I have several board members that I work with, that, one in particular, that we, we rarely really agree on the entire issue, but it, it helps so much to talk to that person and, and bounce ideas off, and it's very civil. Sometimes, we're both really stubborn, because we're both there, you know, at a different place, but we can agree to disagree, and, and sometimes even agree on that issue, even though our principles aren't the same.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we're going to another 90-second question, and this particular question is, has been customized for each of you, and we're going to start this series of questions with Ramona Vanilla. Ramona, what is the first thing you would change if you were elected?
I would change, two things. I would change several things about the way the board currently operates, and I would change the way that the board operates with the management staff and with the employees. I would try to find a way, I would, I would make a very clear effort to make sure that there was clear lines of communication open for all of those kinds of things to happen, because too often, when you, when you get into a new situation, you think you understand it, but you don't understand it until you find out if these people are on board, if these people are on board, if there is a strategic plan that you're all working toward, and is the vision cloudy, or is the vision clear? These are the things that I would start to do, and you start to do this by a very long study process that you do by yourself.
Thank you very much. Wayne, I'd like to ask you this question. In your ballot statement, you talk about creating a positive work environment. How does a board of trustees do that?
The board of trustees is at the top of the hospital, and the top always pushes down the things that they have value and the things that they need to have done and want to have done. So in motivating the employees and making the place a better place to work, the policies have to come from the board. The policies have to be good to the employees. The policy has to be good to the administration who are running the employees. The policies have to be good to especially the patients who are in the hospital, and so that's the way I would do it, push those things down from the top.
Thank you very much. Roger, it's your turn to answer this question. In your ballot statement, you talk about the challenge of applying fundamental wellness methods to our lives. What do you mean by this?
Okay, you know, be, being appointed to the Community Healthcare Alliance has been an eye-opening experience for me, because I have learned that there are three behaviors which lead to four outcomes, which acquaint, which, which result in 50% of the deaths in San Diego County. I learned that smoking, drinking, and eating have led to heart disease, diabetes, cancer, and obesity, which those four things alone account for 50% of the deaths in San Diego County. I would like to take that knowledge and the wonderful teaching experience and teachers through the nurses and the doctors at that hospital, and try to collaborate with the, with the local schools to start telling the children at a young age, hey, look at, these three things lead to these four things, which lead to this. And they'll all be able to look at that and say, hey, you know what? I know somebody who is experiencing that, my great uncle or my great aunt, and, and it will resonate with them. Now, maybe not right the first year, but as we work in a collaborative, collaboratively, bleh, I can't get that out, with the area schools, it will work. It's a program that will work, and that's what I mean by that.
Thank you very much. Rosemarie, what do you mean when your ballot, when in your ballot statement, you reference that you improved market share of patients? How do you provide them with services, and how do you pay for them?
I think my ballot statement, if it said that, sir, is that we lost 30% of the market share of patients in 2008, when Sharp Mission Park was sold out to Scripps and Sinidis. I believe that in order to survive, that the hospital survived monetarily, that the hospital does need its market share of patients. Fortunately, we have a leadership that has come in and has been able to bring a great deal of that 30% of market share of patients back to the hospital. We provide services that the community, the people in this community need, so that they do not have to travel to Scripps or Alvarado. Again, I would say that if those that are uninsured would probably, we would help them with the clinics, through the clinic, going to the community clinics, and then a follow-up, which we also, Tri-City also does currently.
Thank you very much. Julie, in your ballot statement, you say, "The best quality of life for all of us must include access to top-quality healthcare." How will you accomplish this?
I actually believe we do have top-quality healthcare at Tri-City Hospital right now. My main concern is that the general public, as I walk around and talk to them, doesn't believe that about our hospital, and it's, it's, it's really a sad thing. I think that probably the best thing that could happen would be for us to have a board that settles down and is much more professional than it has been, and watches constantly over the development of healthcare. I think we've been making great strides. The hospital is doing a good job. The employees are working very hard. It's very important for the people who sit in the seats that we're seeking, create an atmosphere that people have confidence in.
Thank you. Steve, in your ballot statement, you referenced that you want to make certain that Tri-City healthcare is well-prepared for the changes that the Federal Affordable Care Act will bring to the healthcare field. What change do you believe will most impact us?
I think it's going to be a positive change. I think it's going to be a financial positive change, in that with more people insured, whatever mechanism that turns out to be, there'll be less uninsured individuals out there whose, whose bills will go to receivership and, and not be received. So, you know, right now, I think that the hospital probably sells off a number of their outstanding bills, because they just won't ever get paid, and they sell them for less than a percent on the dollar, and, and so they've lost revenue. So I think with the, with the Affordable Healthcare Act that's coming onboard, as it progresses, I think more and more individuals coming through the doors of Tri-City Hospital will have some type of insurance or Medicare, or Medi-Cal, whatever it is, onboard, so they can pay those, those numbers upfront, and the hospital won't be chasing that money for that reason.
Thank you.
And I also think that as, as we go moving forward too, we'll have more people, not only more people insured, but more people with better insurance, better packages available to them than they ever had in the past.
Thank you. Charlene, the current Tri-City Healthcare District Board of Trustees, of which you are a member, has repeatedly demonstrated its acrimonious nature. What can you do to turn this around?
Within about 100 days of being at Tri-City on my first term, I realized that Kathleen Sterling had been there for almost 12 years, and that that was a big problem. And unfortunately, it's really hard to deal with somebody like that. As an elected official, the, the government, the people have elected that person, they want them there by electing them, and it's a real challenging situation. And, you know, basically, myself and my board member, fellow board members, and I would say I have a fantastic rapport with all the board members. I have, there's, there's absolutely no acrimonious situation there. We get along, we talk about things, we solve problems all the time, we work in the committees. However, that one problem, I would never like to see again. And, you know, and I think, had that been dealt with in the very beginning differently when she came there, it might not have gone on so long.
Thank you very much. Okay, the, the next question is a 60-second question. We will ask the same question of each of the candidates, and Steve, we're going to start with you this time. What skills will you bring to the Tri-City Healthcare District Board of Trustees to create an effective, harmonious, respected governing body?
Again, I'm reflecting my time, my tenure on several boards, the Vista City Council Board, North County Transit Board, NCSA Wastewater Board, and every time that I sit down with my peers, whether in open session or closed session, I have a great deal of respect for them. I listen to what they have to offer. I don't necessarily believe everything that they offer, or philosophically have the same beliefs as they do, but I do respect what they have to say. So it, and the challenge is, the challenge is to come to some kind of consensus, and, and I think on this board, quite frankly, coming to consensus has been probably the main issue. So what I bring to, to this board is, is a history of working with my peers, finding solutions to problems, understanding contracts, rather, rather complex, and, you know, and running a city is rather complex, and running a hospital is just as demanding. And so it's, it's that expertise of understanding contracts, understanding how to work with personnel, understanding how to, how to progress, and not just keep this stagnant.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Julie?
Yes.
What skills will you bring to the Tri-City Health Care District Board of Trustees to create an effective, harmonious, respected governing body?
I think, like Steve, I have a long experience as an elected official. I know how to govern. I've served on North County, I served on Carlsbad Unified School District for nine years. I served on the City Council in Carlsbad for 14 years. I was on the North County Transit District Board. And on all those Boards, I've always been known as the person who listens and tries to bring people together. I think there is a way that a Board can function well if they take the time to do it. They need to start out at the very beginning of the year and set ground rules for how they will behave publicly. And we have a responsibility as elected officials to create that aura of being a professional body. So I know how to do that. I've done it many times on many, with many organizations, and I look forward to doing it at Tri-City.
Thank you very much. Rose Marie, what skills will you bring to the Tri-City Health Care District Board of Trustees to create an effective, harmonious, respected governing body?
That's very good, because I do believe that leadership starts at the top, and it starts with the Board. And it's true that we have not always been very civil to one another, but I think that there are a majority of the Board that has developed trust, and not only trust, honesty, and I believe that we've developed a transparency with the administration. Maybe that's difficult for some people to believe, but I'm sorry for that. But I do believe that there's more respect now than there was maybe two years ago for one another. I do believe that, I talked to an individual yesterday who said that he feels that part of our problem is that this Board does not understand labor laws, and that perhaps we need to have someone come in and teach more about labor laws. I have brought in a facilitator as Chair, and the facilitator has worked with us, and hence more harmony has occurred. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Roger, what skills will you bring to the Tri-City Health Care District Board of Trustees to create an effective, harmonious, respected governing body?
I'm going to give you four points, and they come from my heart. They come from the essence of who I am, and they're going to be the ensuring of the effective and efficient running of the hospital. It's going to provide leadership, it's going to provide guidance, and it's going to make sure that the hospital is running at a profit. And I'm going to do it with what's in my personality, my general makeup, and I believe that that's what it needs.
Thank you very much. Wayne, what skills will you bring to the Tri-City Health Care District Board of Trustees to create an effective, harmonious, respected governing body?
I think the first word is leadership. I spent the first 20 years of my life after I was 19 in the United States Marine Corps. And if there's one thing the Marine Corps teaches you, it's leadership. Leadership at all levels. And also, the 31 years that I spent in health care, I've been in leadership positions the whole time. So I think the big thing that I bring is leadership. The second thing that I would bring is communication skills. In these jobs that I've had in the Marine Corps, and since I retired from the Marine Corps, it's always been very important to be able to communicate, to communicate up and to communicate down. And I think that I have the communication skills to be able to do that, to make ideas understood, to make thoughts into reality. I believe that I can do that.
Thank you very much. Ramona, what skills will you bring to the Tri-City Health Care District Board of Trustees to create an effective, harmonious, respected governing body?
Well, I think I have the ability to get to the kernel of truth in an issue, and I'm able to ask the right questions to remove the chaff from the kernel so that we get to the right answer. I have the ability, I do have the ability of leadership. I was elected three times to the Carlsbad City Council. I have the ability to explain an issue to the public so that they understand it, and all of these things are needed if you're going to try to make progress. Communication is difficult because everybody comes from their point of view, and point of view determines one's perspective on an issue. And so by bringing the kernel of truth out and trying to make it palpable to everybody so that they can understand it, they may not agree with you, but you do that to make the best decision you can.
Thank you. Charlene, what skills do you bring to the Tri-City Health Care District Board of Trustees to create an effective, harmonious, respected governing body?
Optimism, a clear head, I'm slow to anger, and the ability to listen and really get the idea of not only what the issue is, but the global view of how it affects the patients at the bedside and the community.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Am I?
No, I thought you were done.
Okay. Kind of lost my track there. Sorry. I've been a nurse for a long time, and that really gives you a lot of insight into people, and it develops your intuitive nature. And it's very easy for me to tell when someone agrees, doesn't agree, or needs more information, and those are good skills.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we have another question. This is also 60 seconds, and it also will be the same question asked of each candidate. And Steve, you get to go first. How do you reconcile the governing responsibilities of the Board with the administrative role of the Chief Executive Officer?
To me, being in an elected position is about perception. And what I see right now is a perception by the public that this Board is dysfunctional, and that the administration seems to have some control over it. I've had conversations with Mr. Anderson, and I've been quite candid with him, saying that it's the Board that's in control and leads the hospital. And Mr. Anderson needs to not, you know, I've seen him take on the Board before, and I think that's not the way to address your issues. He's got himself in a little bit of trouble for that. And so I think right now, what we need to do as a Board, and what we need to do on this Board, is take control back over the hospital again. Working with Mr. Anderson, I think he's done some great, great things for this hospital. But between some of the accusations he's made against the Board, and some of the legal decisions made by Council, I think we're ill-advised, and I think it's time to maybe change that a little bit.
Thank you very much. Julie, how do you reconcile the governing responsibilities of the Board with the administrative role of the Chief Executive Officer?
Well, I think it's very simple. I think that it's very important for the Board to establish themselves as a body that can work together, first of all, and to be very quite clear that it is the Board who is in charge of the hospital. And the CEO works for the Board. I think there is some misperception, and it needs to be abundantly clear. Like Steve, I agree with Steve. I mean, there have been some problems, and I think those things need to get cleared up. But first of all, the Board needs to get themselves together and all be headed in the same direction so that they can administer in a proper way.
Thank you. Rose Marie, how do you reconcile the governing responsibilities of the Board with the administrative role of the Chief Executive Officer?
I believe there need to be ground rules. And I do believe that workshops are effective, where you can sit down and address these issues, one-on-one with the CEO and the Board. I believe that effective communication with the CEO is paramount to making the organization work. However, the Board does have its designated rules by the bylaws. The Board needs to know its designated position on issues, and what they can and cannot do. Not only do we have the bylaws, but we also have other manuals that tell us, the district law book produced by the Association California Hospital districts that govern, actually, they give governmental codes that the district must abide by. We need to abide by those governmental codes, and we need to have an understanding with the CEO. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Roger, how do you reconcile the governing responsibilities of the Board with the administrative role of the Chief Executive Officer?
There's a common thread that everybody's hearing, and it's the culture of the Board. So we do have to start with the culture of the Board first. But right from there, the CEO does answer to the Board, and the Board answers to the community. So here's how I reconcile it. Connectivity to the public. I'm not a big website person, I'm better at working, but I'm creating a website that will be pretty interactive if I do get elected, so that community members, if they can't call me, if they can't see me at a Board meeting, if they can't get out to a community committee meeting, there's a way that they'll be able to connect with me online. Hey, I agree with this, or I don't agree with this. Connectivity to the public is going to be crucial as it moves forward.
Thank you. Wayne, I'd like to ask you the same question. How do you reconcile the governing responsibilities of the Board with the administrative role of the Chief Executive Officer?
Well, I think you said it. You have a role of the Board, and you have a role of the Chief Executive Officer. And I think that the role of the Board, as been said here several times, is to lead. And the role of the Board is to give policies to the Chief Executive Officer and allow him to carry them out. So having been the CEO of hospitals, I understand what it's like to get guidance from the Board and have to go put that on the field and make sure that it works, and report back to the Board when it works and when it doesn't work. So I think it's very, very important, as been said, that the Board takes charge of their responsibility. And one of their biggest responsibilities is hiring the Chief Executive Officer. And if the Chief Executive Officer has a problem with the Board, then the Board should do the things that they need to do and their responsibilities.
Thank you very much. Ramona, how would you reconcile the governing responsibilities of the Board with the administrative role of the Chief Executive Officer?
Well, you have to remember that the CEO is an at-will employee of the Board. And together, they're supposedly a team that share the same information and share it in a timely manner so that the best decisions can be made. When it happens that all of the Board members do not have the same information and give it to the Board members in a timely manner before an issue is decided, you run into chaos. So you have to have a good two-way communication, and I would like to see briefings done by the CEO to the Board members prior to every Board meeting. I know they're voluntary, but I would like to see briefings done so that the information that the CEO has, he will give to the Board members, and vice versa.
Thank you. Charlene, how do you reconcile the governing responsibilities of the Board with the administrative role of the Chief Executive Officer?
First and foremost, by having one-on-ones with your CEO, who you might agree with on some issues and you might disagree. And in his office with that door closed, discuss it and ask lots of questions, and then if you need more information, your Board book, when you, well, the other thing is to first attend the Board Agenda Conference, because there you will see what is coming, and sometimes you can sort of get a gist of who's thinking what in administration, where they're headed. Then your Board book has a lot of information on it, has information on every single thing that you're going to vote on, and you read that from cover to cover. And then I talk to Board members, and I have very good rapport with my fellow Board members and just talk it out. You have to consider the Brown Act, you can't speak to everybody, but it works.
Thank you very much. I have one more question I'd like to ask each of you, and this will also be a 62nd question. And Julie, I'm going to start with you.
Oh, goodie.
Now, when all of you arrived here today, you probably had some idea of what we might ask you, and we may or may not have approached that subject. But Julie, what is the one question you wished I had asked you?
I think I wish that you had asked me about, a little bit more about my reputation in the community as a community leader.
And how would you have responded?
Well, I've spent my entire life, from the time I moved to Carlsbad in 1976, volunteering and working with organizations to better them and make them move forward quickly, and in a good way. And I think that my reputation as an elected official and a community leader precedes me. So I would have liked you to ask me that question.
Thank you, and so it was done.
Thank you.
Okay, Rose Marie?
Yes.
What question do you wish I had asked you?
Well, I sat here and thought, after all the questions you have asked me, that it's an, I wish you had asked me why I thought, I think you did though, asked me why I thought I had the experience to be a good Board member. I have been awarded three times since 2001, the Public Health Award Leadership, San Diego County, and two times by the California Hospital Association. And I have been awarded Outstanding Leader for District Board Member by the Association California Hospitals. I've been noted in who's who for nursing, nursing care, quality, what I stand for in nursing, my principles for nursing care. So I think all in all, that the people need to know that I do respect all patients, and I believe they deserve not only respect, but dignity as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Roger, you know I'm going to ask you that same question.
Yeah, I already got the answer.
And the question, of course, is what do you wish I had asked you, and your answer is?
Well, the question that I thought you were going to ask is, Roger, do you think that all these good people and those that are going to watch and read about this should vote for you? And I'd say, yes, absolutely, I am the right candidate for this. Please give strong consideration to me. But actually, actually, in all honesty, I am, by nature, I'm a hard worker. I work thoroughly through all problems that come before me, but when it comes to public, I will admit this, I get a little nervous. It's not that I can't perform-type nervous, it's just that I get nervous speaking, so I'm glad you didn't ask me too many questions.
Thank you.
I love it.
Wayne, what do you wish I had asked you?
Why does this community need you?
And your answer to that question would be?
My answer would be that I need the community. I need to help the community, and I need to do the things that I believe need to be done in the community, and especially on this Board. When I looked around at what I could do for the community when I moved in, I thought, what's the best thing you could do? And I said, if you've got 31 years' experience in health care, that ought to be something. And I found out that the Board was going to elect four new members, and I thought, that would be a wonderful way to give to the community the things that I have to give, which are all the things we had been talking about earlier, the knowledge, the experience, the ability to do the things, the ability, most of all, to understand and know what's going on in the hospital and know how to solve the problems.
Thank you very much. Ramona, I know there's probably be a question that you wished I had asked you.
And the question is, why did you come out of retirement to do this? And the answer is, I really got frustrated seeing a high-level organization perform badly. I truly believe that America is great if its agencies and its foundations are strong, whether it be local government, regional government, whatever. And it really irritated me that we have such a fine hospital here, and it seemed to have the wrong perception in the Tri-City community. So I thought, along with my friend Julie, we know how to do this, we know how to make it better. it better. And so, we talked, and we said, well, let's try. Let's try and make it better, because we care about our regional community, we really do. And we've put all of our past years of service into the regional community, and we think we can help this particular community, Tri-City.
Thank you very much. Charlene, I'm sure there's a question you would have liked me to ask you.
I guess that question would be, what is your perception of how Tri-City functions and the board that so often has been called dysfunctional? And I will tell you that we had one outspoken, critical, screaming, horrible person on our board that for years gave Tri-City a bad reputation, because what newspapers do is they sell sensation. They don't sell three board members at every committee of, I think, which we have six or seven now, that come in and work for two or three hours with community members and really discuss the issues. And that's where the work of the board gets done, is in those committees. And we do a wonderful job. And look at Tri-City Hospital. Not only is the care outstanding, but we are growing, we have a new building, we are just doing so many good things.
Thank you very much. And we have one more individual to respond on this. It's that you, Steve.
Thank you.
Which question do you wish I had asked you?
Well, I guess, kind of heard it the same thing here today, and basically, why am I sitting here? And, you know, I sit on a council right now, why am I stepping away from the council and moving on? And I think it's a reflection, a little bit of my nature. I like to help people. I've been educated for 30 years, helping young children learn numerous subject areas, and helping out my city. I think I can walk away from the city pretty proud of the things that we've accomplished in the last 12 years. And I think when I hear about, and, you know, I sat on the foundation board for a number of months, and I hear about the good things that this hospital is doing that people don't know about. As we heard before, the media tends to sensationalize, and they tend to put the headlines out there about this dysfunctionality, when really this hospital is operating very well. And nothing, you know, I may have said something about Mr. Anderson, but I think he's doing an outstanding job. I'm glad they hired him on. I think he's done a great job for this. So, I'm here to help. I'm out walking the precincts right now. Rosemarie, you might know that your name is well spoken of all the time when I'm out there, so I'll stop there.
Great. Thank you very much. And first of all, I would like to say to everyone who showed up tonight, thank you very much for being here. And of course, particularly, thank you to all of you for taking on the tremendous exercise that it is to get your name out and your reputation to fill positions which are very much needed in this community. We want to thank you. Can we acknowledge them, please, for this? And thank you to Maricosta College and the Chamber of Commerce for making this possible. Everybody have an extraordinary weekend, and thank you again, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.